Twenty first, two thousand nineteen. We stand for the public rights.
Let the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal rights and justice for all.
Councilman Scranton?
President.
Councilman Livingston?
President.
Councilman McCruss?
President.
Councilman Taylor?
President.
Councilman Papstra?
President.
Councilman Matso?
President.
President Scanlon?
President.
Mr. President, that's all set.
Criminal business, one seven, two thousand nineteen. Councilman Scranton?
Thank you, Mr. Cruston. And I stand in actual address approval for the business meeting. It's August seventh, two thousand nineteen. Second?
All the favoritists?
Aye.
At the public cabinet, you have five minutes to speak. Please be courteous. Speak your name and your address.
Headwork D P, and we're going to pick up the Johnson City joint sewer plant.
Can you say your address, please?
Oh, yeah, one twenty nine weeks, where would hurt us really good?
Mr. President?
Motion is acceptable. Second? Uh, alright, well, you guys already know me. Adam D P, back to planning for eleven years, I'm a career mechanic. We've come down here, week after week, month after month, talking about privatization. I'm going to change gears a little bit and talk about the construction a little bit more. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago at the work session. And just a couple of updates. First of all, Digestor Three, it's up and running, it's running great. We got sludge going in, sludge coming out. Our numbers are phenomenal, this leak, seed sludge took great. The issue we're having now is we have nowhere for that sludge to go. The process is rushed so quick that the building that is set up to accept this sludge isn't ready to accept it yet. So now we're going to recycle that through the plant, which is upsetting our primary tanks and we're having other issues that we're taking care of. But we wait for high flows, we slowly introduce it down. So it's not a huge concern, but if everything was done in a kind of manner, then should not, then this wouldn't have been an issue. They're in the process of putting Digestors One and Two online. We spoke about the leaks. They have cens gone in there and injected the cones they like to use. The cones have not been sealed, but the door has. So my biggest concern there, I expressed it a couple of weeks ago, was leak testing. We know water is coming in, we don't know if it's going to hold around. The lower cone, like I said, has not been sealed yet like it was on Digestor Three. Everybody knows the problem we had with that in the past few years. Everybody talks about these punch lists. We have, we had in building punch lists, we've been in that building for about a year and a half now. The front doors don't open correctly. Got the bed doors out of emergency, if you try to exit the right door, you're going to smack your face into the glass before you get outside. Headworks, we have, I guess, taken that building over, started rebuilding it in there. And stuff breaks down, we're already repairing it. We've been breaking shear pins. I was going to say, we've changed about four or five already. We haven't tested one screen, running the flow yet, it's still that always green. So we don't even know if that facility's going to run the way that we're paying for it to be run. And there's still no hot water going to those screens, so we're trying to know, is it cold water? A big topic a couple of weeks ago was communication. A lot of that has been resolved. A new form since then has been produced. We fill out the form, it goes to our supervisors, it's that emailed out to Jacobs, everybody gets a copy. And then once the issue is addressed, everybody who was involved in that gets a copy back saying that the issue's been taken care of. I actually filled out my first one today when we were, ironically, it was the same kind of pipe that we had a problem with Digestor Three. Digestor Two had the issue. Filled out the form, I was immediately called by Jacobs, took me down there, that bad situation is, I feel that corrected. Hopefully, we have that leak fixed tomorrow. As far as safety, we talked about the hydrogen sulfide conditions in the center food room. I have talked to some contractors and found out that the ventilation system is undersized for the processes in there now, but it's been undersized for the process that will be in there in the future. So that's why it's not working. Our employees are now getting readings up to twenty-seven parts per million. According to OSHA, five parts per million, you have to be out. And at a hundred parts per million, it is immediately dangerous to, like the health, it's the IDLH. Hydrogen sulfide, for you guys that don't know, it mixes with the fluids in your lungs and creates an acid and you start burning your lungs up from the inside. This is the, this is happening every day, on a daily basis. Our guys are having to go in there, we're personal monitors. Even with the ventilation fans running, they're getting levels of four and five. We actually purchased a new ventilation fan and sold it today, hopefully that helps the situation. Uh, thank you. Normally would avoid this, avoid areas like this, but with this part of the plant, it's a process that we have to use, and that's the only way we can get this out of the plant. Otherwise, we're just filling up and eventually everything's just going to start overflowing. That's all I have, apologies. Thank you.
Who else wishes to speak with this report?
I'm Mary Hall, I live at forty-five Park Street in Cleveland, Virginia, and I'm here about the destroy. I'm going wrong. I talked with the manager of the plant, they did find a broken part and they fixed it. They also found a broken screen and they fixed it, but they didn't fix it because the D E C had notified me that after, even after it was fixed, they found lint around the building and on the roads. My problem is the noise. I'm still asking council to rescind their special permit because they are out of compliance. They are starting before six AM in the morning and they are going well after midnight. Five out of six nights a week. Saturday, Saturday morning, they were still going at quarter of two. Monday morning, quarter after, Monday morning. I think it was either Monday or Tuesday morning, they were going by quarter and divide. So. I wonder what's going to be done. Any other suggestions?
I think not. I talked to Brian Creage and he's very concerned about being a good neighbor from my conversation with him and wanted to work to rectify any problems that arise from the operation that they destroyed. And I know he sent people down to you and your neighbor at forty-seven, Clark, to talk to you. You did say you talked to the manager.
Yes.
And they cleaned up the lint that was in the yards, they were sending people down on a regular basis to look at that, to direct them, and that's what he told me?
No, they sent, they sent people out one time to clean up the lint, the pictures that I showed you. But even after that, I talked to a D E C gentleman in Kirkwood, Kirkwood, he called me. And he said, he went out to check and he found lint around the building and on the streets still.
Would it have to fix some part, except a screen?
Yeah, the screen had a hole in it.
Yeah.
But my, my, I don't want to hear he wants to be a good neighbor. The manager and the workers and the owner obviously walked through the door, so they saw the lint on the street and around the building. Nothing was ever done. They're inside the building. Now, the noise that I was hearing must have been horrendous inside and they never found a broken part until I complained. And yes, they fixed it, I mean, they had no choice because I was going to start walking up and down from their building, pick with a sign that's in the screen. The thing is, they fixed, they fixed the loud street noise. But the hum, for some reason, when the machine is working, is louder than ever.
Well, I'm not familiar with it, so we'll continue to work with the owners and see if we can rectify any problems.
When, when the, when the machine is on, it makes a constant low hum. When they've got it working, it's louder than ever. And even though they supposedly fixed the broken part that was in there, it's louder than ever when it's running now. And about the, the time thing, I was wondering, how can I verify the times that they're running when they're not supposed to be? I mean, nobody's going to just take my word for it. How do I verify? Do I call the police department to say, hey, they need to go over there and see if they're running and make note of it? And I don't want to do that. Police have better things to do than that. But there's got to be some way that I can verify that they're running at quarter of two in the morning when they're supposed to be turned off at midnight.
Yeah, first off, thank you again for, for coming down. Like Councilman Papstra, I followed up with the owner as well. I don't live very far from there. I'm an early riser in the morning. I wake up at four thirty and I walk my dog right in that area around five, five thirty, which is before the six AM permit start time. That loud screeching noise, I have not heard in, during the last couple of times that I've been down there. Could you articulate specifically what nights of the week or what mornings of the week that you're hearing this hum, so we can communicate that to him?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, nights.
Okay.
Sometimes Monday morning, but always Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday morning.
Ma'am, do you have access to, like, self-reporting devices, video camera, audio?
I tried, do you want it with my cellphone? And it doesn't pick up good, and it's, it's nothing like.
My, my advice could be if it's screeching loud and it's after midnight.
The screaming has stopped. The hum has gotten loud.
If it's noise that is obnoxious and interfering with your quiet enjoyment after midnight, you should call the police because that's what a noise violation is. You should make a noise complaint, there should be a record, okay? And what also is about giving my information, at least this corporation has to know, if you give my information, we can talk about this tomorrow. Because if they're in violation of their usage approvals, that's a separate matter, which needs to be necessarily verified by you as an individual person, although surely it would be wonderful if you were able to capture it. But yes, please do make a noise complaint, the police can come on and take any type of record, okay?
Okay.
I know, I know it seems like they have better things to do, they do, but your quiet enjoyment is, is important as well.
Well, my neighbor takes sleeping clothes, so she can go to sleep. Me, I either turn on my fan or the air conditioner and a lot of times my TV, so I can go to sleep because the hum is, it's like having a bad juicing in your ear, is what it is. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary Edwards, thirteen Clarinet Drive. I work for the sewer stream plant. Well, I took some notes, but I didn't get to write a speech, so I'm probably going to be all over the place. Last business meeting, it was brought up that the sewer stream plant has been mismanaged for years, if not decades. I got hired in two thousand and seven by Kathy Young. And so that's basically all I know. I don't know what happened before that, I've heard stories, and it is pretty colorful stories that I've heard. But I kind of wanted to hug Kathy for a minute and say she was trying to move that plant in a different direction and have everybody educated and trained and certified to run that plant. I think she was definitely doing a better job than the stories I heard about former superintendents, I guess they were. Beyond that, I kind of wanted to know what we haven't done for the taxpayers as current staff, because that was also brought up, that council would like the best for the rate payers. So that, that, that's a question I would appreciate. Anybody wants to answer now or when you guys speak? What, what's the, what's the benefit of the sales pitch that we're getting by these bids that are coming out? We're fourteen months behind, the plan isn't running. Currently, right now, we are understaffed by seven or eight people, I believe, according to the books. We don't know how many people we will need, we don't know. Anyway, we've taken ownership of, I think, maybe one building there. I'm just not sure, even when we get these bids, what we're going to compare it to. The budget we had now, that we basically just made up numbers, I'm assuming, because we don't know what's going to be running. We don't know how many people we're going to need again. You guys have all said that you need more information, more data, we want to see what these bids are. We have nothing to compare it to. They are guessing just as much as we are, so what happens when their guess is wrong? What happens when they need five more people than they thought? What happens when some of the breaks that they didn't think about or, I mean, the list could go on. What are the benefits that you guys are looking for, for, from a private company? Obviously, they're a for-profit company, so they're going to stick money in their pocket. Our budget, if we are under budget, goes back to the city of Binghamton and to Johnson City. What's going to happen to the money that they're under budget? I'm assuming them probably go in their pocket. I think that's pretty much all I have, as I jump around. I just want to ask one more question. I would just like the opportunity as a worker to prove that we can run this plant when it's under running. At least give us the common courtesy to give us a chance to run it. We have a new superintendent, we have a new su, assistant superintendent. And I think we deserve at least a chance before you decide to go a different route and give that to somebody else. Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Brian Hepbeck. I live in Forty Main Street, Hallsdale, Pennsylvania. I'm a worker at the Binghamton Johnson Wastewater Company. Last few meetings, we've had people from the community and from the staff expressing concerns about privatization of the sewer plant. We've had staff of the plant expressing about safety, the testing of equipment before it comes online. Just to reiterate what Adam had stated, Digestors One and Two had foam injected into the cone, but that's it. They closed the hatches, now we're filling up the overflow lines to do a functional test on the inner membrane, so they have no intentions of doing a leak test on this Digestors One and Two. It seems like everything is being rushed to meet deadlines, so the plant doesn't get fined. So what else is being overlooked? What else is not being tested? There are things that plant personnel have caught, and those, what about the processes that we haven't caught? Jerry Neitzing stated that he has inspectors inspecting the work being done. Well, here's one case, I was working on it Sunday, or I'm sorry, it was a Saturday. An inspector gave me an insight that they could not climb down a ladder and that the contractor was downstairs in sub-levels working. So she could, that person could not inspect what the construction was doing. She also stayed, apparently I gave it away, but. So the inspector was going back to the office to correct reports that were written by another inspector that no longer works for Jacobs Construction. So they're not only not inspecting the work, they're also fixing reports. How long does this have to go on? We have to think about the safety of the workers and the environment. That's all. And it just seems like, apparently our safety is worth thirty-seven thousand dollars a day times, everything's being rushed. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Who else wishes to speak with this report?
Good evening, Tark Delison, seven three nine, Southside, Binghamton. I'm just going to echo some of the comments that I've shared previously, and that is that there's an incredible amount of confusion over funding this project. And I recall that there, there were three different modifications to the original bonding. Pretty much went from a hundred and ten million to two hundred and something million, and then I believe in two thousand and fifteen, it was canceled approved up to three hundred and sixty-five million for this project. Does anyone know how much we bonded thus far? How much of that bonded authority we've exhausted? No? Okay. The Environmental Facilities Corporations, which is a state agency, does provide low interest bonding for water and sewer projects. Does anyone know how much of that bonding authority we were able to secure from EFC for this project? No? The lawsuits that are pending, I know they're pending, but obviously you all can go into executive session for these matters. Has anyone had conversations with the administration about how much is actually being asked and how much might be received by the city through those settlements? No? What about the FEMA payments? What is outstanding? What is guaranteed? Anybody? No? So when we talk about a responsibility to the rate payers, it seems that as we move forward with this fast-track plan to privatize the management and operations, there's a dearth of knowledge among those who are supposed to be the representatives of the constituents, in which your primary responsibility is a fiduciary responsibility as council members. And nobody has any idea where the, where the finances stand on this project. And I hope you again can fast-forward your comments, so if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be held accountable, but I'm really just looking for information, like most people are. The original study that was done about the potential rate increases showed anywhere from eighty percent to, I think, about a hundred and fifteen percent rate increase for users across multiple jurisdictions. But I also believe that was before Mayor David decided to take this plant in an entirely new direction and fund a three hundred and sixty-five million or four hundred million dollars project, so. If I were you, I would really call for a form that you have the administration come down. They're going to, of course, provide you smoke and mirrors and a lot of obscurity. But Chris, you know, I've worked on this council, when you bond for something, you also have a fifteen or thirty or whatever repayment plan. You know what you'll have, what you have to pay back, right? So you know that. So what is the worst-case scenario? And then what is anticipated rate increase to meet our bonding requirements, repayments? And then what are the, all the possible variables, the worst and the best, from both the lawsuits and the FEMA payments? But President Scanlon, you have authority here to take leadership on this and you're not doing anything. This is not politicizing our process. This is about taxpayers and rate payers asking for clarity and transparency on the largest infrastructure project in this region's fifty, sixty-year history. What's political is that you shut down this conversation with charges of politicization. That's the political move. The last thing I'll say is that I know you all are hoodwinked by the administration, thinking that you were supporting the study when you weren't. You know what a study looks like? When the mayor wants to explore possibly closing down fire stations or consolidating, he said, we're going to do a study. We're not going to take any, any decision until that study is done. I just want to say, I think he's likely doing this again with his own authority about studying Columbus Park and the improvements. And what he's really doing is using a consultant to plan for the relocation of the Parks Farm over by Columbus Park, so you might want to look into that too.
Thank you. Who else wishes to speak with this report? See, done, will be one. I'm just, for, not for agenda. Director Ordance one nine dash eight seven, consider your findings, Councilman Papstra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let the ask for unanimous approval of ordinance seven, zero nineteen dash eighty-seven.
Second?
This is an ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen Commerce Department budget to transfer funds from the Air Supply Line for anticipated expenses.
Who's your countess?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a six thousand dollar transfer for supply margin progress. Thank you. Call and questions, Mr. President?
Who's your call?
Councilman Scranton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCruss?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstra?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
Seven nine zero eight.
Director Ordance one nine dash eight eight, consider your findings, Councilman Papstra.
Thank you, Mr. President. My task is announced. Approval of zero nine, ordinance zero nineteen dash eighty-eight.
Second?
This is an ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen Parks and Recreation Administration budget to transfer funds for retirement payout.
Questions for countess?
Call and question.
Who's your call?
Councilman Scranton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCruss?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstra?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven nine zero eight.
Director Ordance one nine dash D nine, consider your findings, Councilman Papstra.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I ask for unanimous approval of ordinance nineteen dash eighty-nine.
Second?
This is an ordinance to amend the twenty nineteen Refuge Fund budget to adjust the Personnel Services budget.
Questions for countess?
Call and question.
Who's your call?
Councilman Scranton?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman McCruss?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papstra?
Aye.
Councilman Matso?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven nine zero eight.
Director Resolution one nine dash six nine, consider your NDA, Councilman Scranton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous approval for Director of Resolution and one nine.
I stand and ask for unanimous approval for Director Resolution, one nine dash six nine.
Second.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an interim municipal agreement with Brum County for operation of First Ward Senior Center, kitchen for the county sponsored senior citizen meal program. Everyone knows the First Ward Senior Center all around Crystal Street. It's a great facility. A lot of people from all of the city and well beyond come down. I hope everyone's pleased.
Question to Countess.
Call a question.
Question to call?
Councilman Scringy.
Aye.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman McCruss.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstra.
Aye.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
At seven I zero X.
Director Resolution, one nine dash seven zero, consider your findings, Councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we now have approval of Resolution nineteen dash seventy. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the William G. Pomeroy Foundation, the amount of twenty-two hundred and twenty dollars to purchase two of his storage partners.
Question to Countess.
Call a question.
Question to call?
Councilman Scringy.
Aye.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman McCruss.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstra.
Aye.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Director Resolution, one nine dash seven one, consider your findings, Councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I ask for unanimous approval of Resolution nineteen dash seventy-one. This is a resolution authorizing, authorizing the mayor to enter to a payment in lieu of taxes pilot agreement with Family Enrichment Network to pay for various properties.
Question to Countess. Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a little bit unconventional, but apparently there is precedent. Family Enrichment Network, as many of you know, is using a number of parcels on the corner of Virgil and Liberty Streets on the north side, right by the Lebar Community Center, to build a supportive housing building. This is a really exciting project. And what's so interesting about what we're doing here is that there's actually going to be a payment from Family Enrichment Network, which is a nonprofit and would normally pay and does pay no taxes on this property. But you know, there was a deal struck between the city of Binghamton and the nonprofit to pay in lieu of these taxes, which they wouldn't pay in the first place as a nonprofit, a sum of eight thousand dollars annually, which is, I think, a pretty good thing. For those that don't know anything about the project, I think it's important that as we continue developing our city for the better, you see all types of new forms of housing coming up. They are also developing a side of housing for those folks that are dealing with homelessness, those folks that are, you know, need more low-income housing. This sort of falls into that category, and it's quite important. I think it'll fall nicely into the neighborhood as part of a community that is growing on Liberty Street. I hope that everyone will support it. Thank you.
Are there questions to Countess?
Call a question.
Question to call? Senator Scringy.
Sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. A little bit less on the substance, and I'll thank Councilman Taylor for that. I'll talk a little bit more about the process here. So in the city of Binghamton, like many cities in the United States, there are a number of property parcels that, for various reasons, do not pay any property taxes. In this particular case, these are seven parcels that the Family Enrichment Network is taking in, and that would count in this particular case due to the fact that they are nonprofit, or more specifically, they're 501(c)(3) status. While I've actually had a few conversations about this with some constituents over the last couple of days, many people who either attend regularly or who've been here know my position on pilots, which is generally a non-positive one. I will say categorically, I do not like the way this is actually named because it's actually kind of off-putting. And when you speak with a lot of homeowners and residents, they actually respond very positively to the idea and the reality that nonprofits that do play very important roles in our community in various ways actually have, if you will, a more touch of the hand in the barrel. They have more at stake. So with this agreement, it's actually very unique in the fact that a 501(c)(3) nonprofit is actually paying into the broader tax base when normally they would not be. And while there can definitely be discussions about amount relative to seven parcels, I think in principle, this is a good step. And I hope that we can continue to work with nonprofits that do use city and public services and have the authority in these things. So under that, again, we'll support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there questions to Countess?
Call a question, Mr. President.
Councilman Scringy.
Aye.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman McCruss.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstra.
Aye.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
At seven I zero X.
Director Resolution, one nine dash seven two, consider your findings, Councilman Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration on Resolution nineteen seventy-two.
Second.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to adopt the Army Corps of Engineers National Standard and the Department of Environmental Conservation State Standards for culminates.
Call a question, Mr. President.
Question to call?
Councilman Scringy.
Aye.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman McCruss.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstra.
Aye.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Seven I zero X.
Director Resolution, one nine dash seven three, consider your findings, Councilman Pabst.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I ask for unanimous consideration approval of Director Resolution nineteen dash seventy-three.
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter to a professional services agreement with the Farland Johnson for disciplinary engineering design and road services for the Wally Street, Washington Street, track and signal upgrade.
Question to Countess.
Call a question, Mr. President.
Councilman Taylor.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to thank Ray Standish and the Engineering Department. This is not necessarily part of, but certainly on a long list of significant pedestrian improvements that are happening in downtown Binghamton. Just in the past few weeks, thanks to the Department of Public Works, all of the, or most of the crosswalks in downtown Binghamton have been restripped with ladder-style crossing, highly visible reflective paint to make the pedestrian experience downtown Binghamton a little bit better. Ray and the Engineering Department have secured and are currently working on a number of high-visibility crosswalks with elevated style. You'll forgive me, I don't know the technical term, but with an elevated crosswalk across the street, flashing lights. And this is throughout the city, not just in the fourth district. So this corner at the corner of Polly and Washington Streets is sort of another example of a place in downtown Binghamton specifically, a long, you know, wide street, long crossing, and a pedestrian signal. So it's an important improvement, and it's an improvement that, like this one and many others, wouldn't happen without the hard work and tenacity of Ray and his staff. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. Thank you.
Are there questions to Countess?
Call a question.
Question to call?
Councilman Scringy.
Aye.
Councilman Livingston.
Aye.
Councilman McCruss.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Papstra.
Aye.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
At seven I zero X.
Ground communications for Council members. We'll start with Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks again to everyone who came tonight to speak. And thank you as well, man, for keeping us informed about the situation regarding Bates Troy. I think, you know, we're all concerned about that. And of course, thank you to Councilman Papstra and Mr. Scringy. It's Grinchy who are in communication with dealers as well. Hopefully, you know, things seem to have gotten better, but only fifty percent of the way. Let's complete that other fifty percent of the way for you. We'll stay on top of that. In terms of the Suits Street and Plant privatization, you know, thanks again for coming here. You know where I stand. It was sort of a different approach in terms of speaking with us as a council tonight. It really showed, in my opinion, you know, what you're all about. You're not here to, you know, make jabs or talk politics. I mean, why would you be? You're here to keep us informed as a governing body. You're here to keep the public informed of the plant that they're paying hundreds of million dollars to renovate. And, you know, I see that, and I hope that the rest of council sees that as well. And I'm very, 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 very curious as to where we stand two weeks away from, less than two weeks away, from the date that, you know, we have as phase one, you know, being completed. We'll see what happens there. I'd also like to put in an official request to the city clerk. I'd just like to have a question formally asked about the council or myself to Ron Lake, the project manager, as to why there isn't a lead test being done on Digestive One and Two, even though Don agreed. We're not going to pretend to speculate or have an answer on that myself. So I'd just like to ask that officially.
Why there's no lead test done?
Digestive One and Two. Lastly, the end of summer is upon us. It's a good thing and a bad thing. It's a bad thing because, well, it's the end of summer. It's a good thing because all our, you know, university students are back in town. Welcome back, Binghamton University students, those of you which didn't stay here over the summer, didn't enjoy the job, or whatever, or live here full-time, full year-round. Also means that there's lots and lots and lots of festivals happening. Just this weekend, we've got Porch Fest on Sunday from noon to seven PM. You know, dozens and dozens of porches on the west side are really booming. Amazing music. Make sure, check that out. You've got Mural Fest Saturday at Cherry Windsor Park. If you're an artist of any sort, stop by to Mural Fest and join them as they, you know, create beautiful murals at that park, create beautiful art. It's a really, you know, amazing small community festival. And then if you're looking to get involved with, you know, student-run organizations or volunteer groups, there's also University Fest on campus where they got carnival rides and food and ways that you can get involved, whether you're a student or not. And that's from eleven to three on Saturday. So there is tons and tons and tons and tons of stuff to do this weekend, weekend thereafter, the weekend after that. So make sure to get out there and not just, you know, not get out there. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Papstra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank everyone for coming down. This is part of the whole process of public participation in our meetings. We look forward to seeing it and hearing it. And one of the gentlemen asked some questions that could be answered, and they were good questions. When there's a meeting coming with both boards to discuss who may be the recommended contractor for this private management, we're going to have time to ask a lot of questions, including those questions that the gentleman had. And at that point, when we talk about what's best for the employees, what's best for the plant, what's best for the ratepayers, you need to have a broad sense of what's going on in order to make that educated decision on what is best. And based on objective information, based on any one of those hearsays and misinformation. So I look forward to having that discussion, having that meeting, and putting it all out and seeing where it really lays. I think that's really the best way. It may be that we stay with the system that you're, we're under now. It's all that matters. There's no set agenda for what's going to happen. And I think a lot of people have that in their head that there's, this is some kind of done deal. And by all means, it is not. So I'll be looking forward to that. And again, the weather this weekend is going to be wonderful, sunny, in the seventies. Any outdoor activity is going to be welcome. Porch Fest, I'm looking forward to that. Went last year, really enjoyed it. And I hope to see a lot of my friends there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, everybody, for coming again. Mr. Abdalzy keeps coming down here. He asks questions that are pretty simple to find. Go online and find out how much the city spent so far with the joint water treatment plant. Also, too, when he was in the administration, the last administration, when the ball rolled and nothing was done, why didn't they step in back then and do something about this water treatment plant? This facility that turned out to be a disaster, and we had to take it on. The last administration did nothing, they ignored it. And that's from what I've seen. Councilwoman Reenia was here at the time. She fought and fought and fought with this. And yes, it was a hundred million dollars to begin with, but that was the same machinery, the same plant that didn't work to begin with. And that's why it's costing us three hundred million dollars today. Because we're hoping, with what the DDC tells us, this plant is supposed to be the right thing for us. There's supposed to be one that's similar to this in the Thousand Island region. We're building a plant that should be on a twenty-acre lot, a ten-acre space. That's why one made this plant so difficult. And when they started building things, there were things that were unforeseen underground that nobody knew existed when it was built back in the sixties to begin with. So, I mean, you keep hearing Mr. Abdalzy come down here and ask me questions. Well, why didn't his administration do something about it when it did break? And that's what I'd like to hear from him and get an answer from him next time he comes and speaks. I really would. I know it's tough for you workers out there on this plant with all the construction going on and going around. If the ventilation isn't right, something's got to be done about it. I don't want to see anybody get hurt, sick, killed, whatever. I mean, that should be brought forward, and really something should be done about it to improve this thing, if they have to put a second one in, if they have to make it larger. If you have to tear something up and put it back in again. It's got to be done. It's safety. Safety is number one. And I do thank you guys for coming down. And I thank Mr. Afiji for coming down and bringing things forward to us and how there are some improvements, but then there are some that aren't. I appreciate that. With that, you got Porch Fest, like everybody said. That is an exciting time here. And the students are back. Be careful out there driving, please. It's, summer's coming to an end, but it's not, it's not over yet. We've still got another month, about September twenty-second is the last day of summer. So with that, have a great week.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Councilman Scringy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to welcome back all of our SUNY Brum and Binghamton University students. Great to see things kind of filling up. I want to thank the Engineering Department, as well as DPW and all of our contracting agencies. We've had a lot of work in the ward in relation to updates on sidewalks and street and driveway aprons. It's been really, really exciting. A number of roads have already been paved. Brown had some updates to it, as well as Cypress and Murphy Ave, or a number of others that are going to be coming up. So I want to thank Engineering's focus on everything in the first district that they're, that they're getting done up there. I also want to thank the Binghamton Police Department, the Community Response Team, zoning and code. They have been absolutely incredible. I think this is the number four talent. think this is the number four town hall slash neighborhood meeting I've had in the first district over the last couple of months. And we've actually had, been very lucky actually to have representatives from each of those departments, uh, taking down information, uh, from all over the district, uh, one of which actually very recently, uh, thanks to a deposition that was taken, actually led to an arrest within seventy-two hours. Uh, it was absolutely incredible. So, I want to thank the residents who have been coming out for that. Uh, and I want to thank Lieutenant Goodwell and Dave Watson and Greg Wheel and Sergeant Bear for, uh, all their hard work on that. Uh, Porch Fest on the west side is Sunday. Uh, make sure you're coming out. Bring in a good chair. It's going to be, uh, some really good music and, um, a lot of, uh, a lot of sun. So, make sure you, uh, come out to that. Uh, the Neighborhood Watch in the first ward, uh, will be resuming the third Wednesday of the month in September at St. Mike's on Clinton Street at 6:00 PM. So, I hope everyone will be able to be there. I want to thank you again for coming down, um, and giving us some updates on Bates Troy. I want to thank Councilman Papister for taking the lead on that, reaching out to the owners. It definitely, from what I've seen and heard myself, there definitely have been some improvements, but I think, like said, we're fifty-fifty. We've got to get the whole way there. Uh, I'll be more than happy to follow up with you after the meeting, man, to get any more specifics and anything that I can help with. So, it really means a lot that you came down to give us both the positive and the constructive criticism on that. So, I appreciate that. Um, again, thank you, everyone, for coming down who spoke tonight. Um, I am absolutely thrilled and excited to hear that there's been something positive in the way of communication. I think that's great. Um, and I really hope that that's a, uh, that's a stepping stone for something more broader to be implemented, uh, regardless of status or where we are in this entire process. I think Counselor Monzo is a hundred percent correct. Um, safety, safety, safety first. Uh, it's great to hear that there is small positive incremental steps that, uh, were occurring, especially after the last two meetings, um, that we've had that have been lively and passionate. Um, I want to, for our residents at home who are watching on Channel 1303 on Spectrum, I want to thank the constituent, uh, who actually reached out to me. Uh, evidently, if you're watching tonight, for some reason, there is audio and not video. I know we have discussed this in this body over the last couple of months, uh, that, um, uh, the audio and video aspects of this chamber, uh, will be a focus in the budget process this year. Um, so I hope that will, uh, I know that we will carry that through to fruition, and, um, I might, uh, suggest as well that maybe we take a look, or relook rather, at that Spectrum slash Time Warner Cable contract and, uh, see what we can do to make sure, beyond YouTube videos, um, to make sure that every, um, avenue that's there for our residents to be able to see and hear us is, uh, working one hundred percent of the time. So, um, and for what it's worth, I do want to thank the clerk's office, uh, like Spectrum. For those of you who don't know, uh, when Time Warner Cable switched over or got assumed by Spectrum, uh, Spectrum no longer, uh, was paying an operator for that. It's actually been our clerk's office that's been doing that, and I think that's kind of been unsung. So, thank you for doing that over the, definitely years now. It's not months, I'm making it. Um, and lastly, or second to last, um, Happy Labor Day, everyone. Uh, I hope you get to spend time with your family, with your friends. Uh, coming up, our next meeting isn't until after that. Uh, and lastly, uh, kind of a personal note, um, I do want to thank all of the constituents and neighbors and friends and people who have just been so supportive. Uh, for those of you who don't know, I'm an Airman First Class in the Air Force Reserve. Um, and I will be on active duty, uh, beginning September 10th. Um, so I do have a notification going out to, uh, constituents in first district, uh, just to follow up with them. But, uh, I obviously, I will be here for the meetings on the third or fourth, is it? Fourth, right. Yeah, third or fourth, yeah, on second, third. So, um, be wrapping things up, and, uh, we'll still have, uh, access to phone, email, internet. Uh, we'll definitely be staying on top of projects and, uh, following things up. So, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, this past week, I read a really interesting article about, um, new techniques in public engagement for elected officials, for, um, public institutions. And one of the interesting things that it pointed out, and, and I am very glad to see so many people here. Um, it was something I mentioned when I got sworn in. I wanted to, you know, see more people coming on a regular basis. Um, and one of the interesting things is that, you know, people tend to show up to meetings, have that luxury, if they can show. Um, and that it's actually contingent on elected officials in this modern age to meet the people where they're at as well. Um, and pursuant to that, I wanted to mention, uh, so recently, uh, Mayor Rich David joined Nextdoor, which is great. Uh, Nextdoor is this, it's like a cloistered, uh, social networking site. It's just folks in the valley here. Um, it's between five and 10% of the population of Vington using Nextdoor. And, uh, and it's actually, uh, pleasantly, surprisingly, uh, functional. You know, it's not, uh, as dysfunctional as something like Twitter or Facebook where you get all this backbiting and negativity. It's usually just a place where people are talking about things that are really relevant to this whole community. And I just wanted to put it out there to my colleagues that, um, you know, your, your presence on there would definitely be noticed. And in fact, Counselor Scingy, if you're going to be leaving town, it might be a really good way for you to keep up with your constituents. I know I've been alerted to a lot of, uh, issues in my district from constituents using Nextdoor. Um, but I would also mention that, you know, when you're not on there, people notice that too. Uh, so, I would encourage my colleagues to check out Nextdoor. Um, there's a, there are basically neighborhoods for each, you know, each part of the city, and then, uh, there's a way to communicate across the city as well. So, it's become something that is widely adopted enough that we might even get critical mass where it'll just continue to grow on its own, you know, just so long as the culture of the state is friendly and functional. Um, so, I, I also wanted to address a couple of things, um, that were brought up tonight. Always thank you to, uh, the staff at the Sioux Street Plant for, for coming out. Um, I wanted to correct something that Counselor Lewis said. The, the actual date for the contract release originally was, uh, the 16th of August, um, but I guess, like, a lot of things, you know, we pushed it late. So, I guess now it's supposed to be, I think, the 27th of August. We're supposed to see a contract come out of this bid selection committee. And I'm really, I've always been really interested in seeing what comes out in this process. Um, I think that, I just want to address for a second, this, there's a notion that's been going around that, that this process of, you know, setting a, a RFP out there, sending the bids come back, that it's sort of a, um, innocuous neutral process, that, you know, we just get to see what comes out. And obviously, there's cost, you know, we spent, I still don't know exactly how much we spent, about $140,000 to commission a study and get this, um, this RFP drafted. Um, but, and, and I can't say for sure that the reason why we have rehired these seven positions is because, uh, who would want to apply for a job that they don't know if it's going to be there, you know, three, four months? Um, but it seems like there are some unintended consequences of floating a plant like this out there, um, while we have so many of the wallets in the air. And so, if you're thinking that, well, we're just going to kind of see what, we're going to shake the tree and see what falls out, I think that's what Mayor Greg Lee said, uh, at our joint work session, um, a month and a half ago, two months ago. Um, I think it's a bit more complicated than that. It's obviously creating some animosity, um, between the owners, us, and our plant staff, who, you know, I think we maybe take it for granted that there's such a functional relationship between the plant staff and their plant managers over there. You know, but that was something that was built up over years of, you know, going through it together, you know, going through these, these storms and, um, nonfunctions and failures of equipment, you know, that they all, I don't know, grew to work together and actually enjoy each other's company. And putting this plant out there, this bidding process out there the way that we did, uh, we've really grew with that dynamic in a way that is largely negative. So, that's, I guess that's just one thing. Um, objective information, Counselor Papister, I mentioned. You know, we should wait to get this objective information. I would love to have some objective information. Uh, I was told by, actually, we were all told by Corporation Council maybe a month ago, that Bruce Toby is after all going to produce a written report. Um, and I've yet to see this, this written report, but that's the objective information that we should all have access to. We should have had access to that objective information from jumpscare. That is how we determine what, how, how Bruce Toby and Ben Bode came to the conclusion that this privatization RFP was the best way to go, was the best way to move forward. And we never got the benefit of the objective information that supposedly exists. So, I think that to say that, you know, folks in the public are reacting before they get to see all the information, to say that, uh, myself or other people, you know, um, in more authoritative positions are speaking before they had access to this objective information, um, is to gloss over the fact that this process, uh, was designed to keep that information in a few people's hands. That I would like nothing more than to have objective information, quantitative reasons for why we're giving this, but they haven't been thought of. Um, and so the last thing I guess I want to mention is, I want to echo what, remember, my colleagues have echoed, safety. I think it's, it's crazy that the, well, first of all, that Jerry Heisman was arguing with our plant staff that, uh, somehow the unsafe conditions were a result of actions that they were or weren't taken. Uh, that it seems like the first inclination wasn't to say, wow, it's unsafe at the plant, we should do something about that. Um, I'm really glad that my colleagues are, are in that place. And, uh, I would like to, to work with you guys to come up with an expeditious solution to this hydrogen sulfide, uh, situation at the plant. It's, it's unbearable for our plant staff. We shouldn't be putting through this. Anyway, I really, uh, really appreciate everyone coming out here tonight and, uh, happy Labor Day.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewis, comments?
Thank you. Try to keep it short, please. There's no one. Um, sorry. Sorry. So, um, there has been the information. In January, I believe you were there to have the conversation for the Sioux Board for what they've gone over with the council. There's, like I said, I wasn't there. If you were there, sure, this video will go. So, there should be the information there that you guys had discussed about that. Um, well, then you should at least have the information. And there's an RF, there's RFP sent out. That's the information that we're waiting on. We're waiting for, um, training people to go over it. We don't have it. I'm not saying we're going to accept it. We already know where we stand. And I'm not changing my ground. But there is a due process, and we're just letting that continue because that's what we do, where we come from, in the community, where we have to search for process, where things happen in appropriate time with the appropriate measures. Now, would that help in right there?
Thank you, Counselor.